Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Whitehall City Council Meeting of Tuesday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. If we'd all please rise for the pledge allegiance, followed by a moment of silence, followed by the pledge allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Og, would you please call roll?
Smith.
Redd.
Harcar.
Dixon.
President.
Brown.
Elmore.
Present.
Morrison.
Present.
Heck.
Present.
President Potter.
Present. I would now take a motion to excuse the absent members.
A motion to excuse the absent members.
Second.
Thank you. It's been a motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Dixon, to excuse the absent members. This is very discussion. Ms. Og, please call roll.
Smith.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
The absent members have been excused. We now have the approval of the minutes, which include the June third, twenty twenty-five, agenda and regular meeting minutes, as well as the June tenth, twenty twenty-five, agenda and committee meeting minutes.
Mr. President, I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Heck, to approve the minutes. It's very special. Ms. Og, please call roll.
Smith.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Minutes have been approved. At this time, we have a special presentation by Mayor Bivens for the Juneteenth Day proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I have a proclamation from my office which reads, whereas Juneteenth, recognized annually on June nineteenth, commemorates the day in eighteen sixty-five when enslaved African-Americans in Galveston, Texas, finally received word of their freedom more than two years after the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation, and whereas Juneteenth, also known as Freedom Day, Jubilee Day, and Emancipation Day, stands as the oldest nationally celebrated commemoration of the ending of slavery in the United States and is now recognized as a federal holiday, also, we will be closed on June nineteenth in the city of Whitehall. Whereas, the observance of Juneteenth reminds us of the enduring contributions of African-Americans to the history, culture, and identity of our nation and serves as a time for reflection, education, and celebration of black resilience, creativity, and excellence. And whereas, the national theme for Juneteenth, twenty twenty-five, is "A Legacy of Freedom, A Future of Justice", calls on all Americans to honor the progress made while acknowledging the continued work towards equity, justice, and full inclusion for all. And whereas, the city of Whitehall is committed to creating a more just, inclusive, and equitable community where the richness of our diversity is celebrated and every resident can thrive in dignity and opportunity. And whereas, the city acknowledges that recognizing and celebrating Juneteenth is a meaningful step in affirming the strength, perseverance, and humanity of African-Americans and confronting the truth of our shared history. Now, therefore, I, Michael Bivens, mayor of the city of Whitehall, do hereby proclaim Thursday, June nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, as Juneteenth National Independence Day in the city of Whitehall, and encourage all residents to reflect on the significance of this day, participate in local celebrations and educational activities, and join together in the ongoing work in building a future rooted in freedom, justice, and equality for all. Thank you.
Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now move into our standing committee reports, first being Administration and Financial Management. Chairperson Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration and Financial Management met Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We have a couple pieces of legislation this evening, and we will meet again next Tuesday.
Thank you. Community and Elder Advocacy, Chairperson Harcar is not here this evening, and Councilwoman Heck.
Just want to take over.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community and Elder Advocacy met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We have no legislation on the agenda tonight, and we will meet again this coming Tuesday sometime after six thirty.
Thank you. Community Standards Enforcement, Chairperson Smith.
Thank you, President Potter. Community Standards Enforcement also met last week. We have ordinance thirty-seven, twenty twenty-five, up for untabling and adoption this evening. Our minutes are on file, and we will meet again next week.
Thank you. Economic Development, Chairperson Dixon.
Thank you, President Potter. Economic Development met last week. Our minutes are on file. We have nothing on the agenda for this evening, and we will meet in these chambers next Tuesday after six thirty.
Thank you. Infrastructure Maintenance Services, Chairperson Brown is not with us this evening. Ms. Smith has volunteered.
Thank you. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services also met last week. They have no legislation on the agenda this evening. Their minutes are on file, and they will meet again next week.
Very good. That brings us to Public Safety, Chairperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Safety also met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. I will meet again next Tuesday sometime after six thirty.
Very good. And brings us to Park and Recreation, Chairperson Heck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and Recreation met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We have no legislation on the agenda tonight, and we will meet again this coming Tuesday sometime after six thirty.
Very good. This brings us to official reports, first one being Mayor Bivens.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Everyone that's here tonight, I really thank you for being here tonight. It's the first night that we are going live with Civic Plus on our streaming services, so I thank you, Julie Og, for all of the training that you've gone through, just so that members of council and the public are aware of our streaming service. We use, and I did speak with some council members as well as President Potter about this. We use Civic Plus for a number of things in the city, one being our mobile app. We do it for our ordinance lookup. We use it for our website hosting, and we found that using it for our streaming is all about updating efficiency and optimizing the services that we have for the city. What the public now has is a streaming service that is completely optimized. There will be no downplay as it relates to our relationship with our city technology and Facebook technology, which, my understanding, updates all the time, and that's where we had times where we were not able to stream because of the permissions. This eliminates all of that. So, the streaming that we have now will not have those hiccups. It is also much more efficient as it relates to our ability to actually access meetings. So, we can actually go to June seventeenth meeting and pull it immediately, rather than if someone were to ask about June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, and June seventeenth, twenty twenty-six, they would have to scroll all the way through the Facebook pages and hope that it's still saved on Facebook since it does update its permissions periodically. So, we have something that the public will have without any restrictions, and, curious enough, it actually broadens our ability for our residents to actually see our council meetings because not everyone is on Facebook, and you don't need a Facebook account to see this streaming service. So, that, I just want to say just publicly, I'm excited about it. I'm sure Julie is excited. And one of the greatest features, as people are watching the streaming service, not only can they see the actual agenda as you're going through them, council, but also the presentations that will be put before council that go up on and are downloaded. The public will actually see that as we're watching it, which was also a complaint that people had as related to Facebook. They were not able to see what the presentation was whenever there was a presentation. So, that is that in a nutshell, but I'm really excited about it. Another thing from the mayor's office. We had, I just got my final report, and thank you, President Potter, for the conversation we had earlier regarding the oil spill. So, fun fact on this, so far today, there have been eighty-five thousand man-hours devoted towards the cleanup of the oil spill from GFL. Eighty-five thousand hours, but you asked the million-dollar question, President Potter, and I had to find out about it. How long will it take or where are we at in it? Interesting enough, today, of all days, United States EPA has taken over. All health and sanitary and remediation measures are completely finished from Broad Street all the way through there. There are all of the cleanup measures, all of the remediation is completely finished. It's now on a trust and verify mode as it relates now, and the United States EPA is now tasked, GFL, with providing its final report so that they can now find out what the cause was. And then, once the cause is assessed, then ultimately, there will be fines and costs so that the residents of the city of Whitehall know the city of Whitehall did have some man-hours that were a part of the remediation. We have calculated those man-hours, and so, to the extent that we're on the totem pole of recovering any of our expenses, we will present those expenses to GFL at the appropriate time. But, at least at this point now, they're installing permanent observation towers so that they can at least see as the summer goes on if there's any oil underneath rocks that come out. They will be able to determine whether or not they actually need to start up any more remediation at that time, but they don't anticipate that right now. Next, I just did the proclamation for Juneteenth. This Saturday, from four to seven P.M., we will be celebrating Juneteenth in our park. But this year, it's a little, it's not a little different, it's a lot different. We will be celebrating it with the National Panhellenic Council, which are all of the Divine Nine Black Greek Letter organizations that are nationally recognized, and they will come into our park, probably expect more than a thousand people into John Bishop Park in celebration of Juneteenth this year. You all are welcome. It is going to be a fantastic celebration, and it is certain to be just a good time. And then, lastly, fishing with dad. I want to thank Shannon Brady. I want to thank Deanna Hannah. I want to thank Jada, our Community Affairs. I want to thank Cory, as well as our brothers keeper for just a fantastic fishing with dads on Father's Day. We had nearly sixty children come out and, just with enthusiasm, to fish for their very first time. It was amazing. They, many of them caught fish for the very first time. Some people went, one of those people was my son, went into the woods and got off the beaten path and actually pulled out, didn't land it, didn't bring it onto the bank, but we did see it, so we did verify it, so it's not a fish story. Probably about a three-foot gar out of that creek, right down at Big Walnut. It was, it was an amazing day, and so, I am very, very pleased with that. I look forward to anyone asking me about the questions. I've got some fish stories, I've got some fish pictures, but it was just a fantastic time. Memories were made, but more than that, Whitehall Community Park was on full display, and everyone just marveled at and would continue. I heard it, if I heard it once, I heard it maybe ten or twelve times. We didn't know that this was here, and so, that was probably more beneficial than anything. I also would like to thank some of the dads, volunteer dads, that came out. You know who you are, that came out to actually help tie lines and show how to throw lines into the water and assuage any of the ickiness of putting worms onto hooks. But it was, it was just a great time, and I just want to thank our Parks Department for having that event. I'm just, my heart was full that day, so thank you.
Mayor, thank you. Good, nice report.
President Potter, if I may have a question. You were talking about observation towers. Any information you're able to share about that?
Yeah, they're installing those permanent observation towers. I need to get more information about that, but that is just more of them monitoring the creek for, my understanding, speaking with Franklin County EMA, is monitoring the creek for any runoff or anything that they, that they have not seen.
It was just the word towers that suggested.
That's what it was. No, it's not going to be big, tall, my understanding, but it's, that's what they told me. That's the way I'm going to report it, and I'm glad you asked me a question because I forgot to mention the Fourth of July fireworks. We're getting people coming in for wristbands. Please come in. We have them here at City Hall, and you can get your wristband. You just have to show, you know, that you're a Whitehall resident, but those are available. But we do have the Fourth of July fireworks that are coming up, as well as the parade, and the Food Truck Festival, which is July the twenty-sixth, also in John Bishop Park. So, just mark your calendars. July is shaping up to be busy, but to your point, Councilmember Dixon, that's not the tower where you're going to see it above the tree line. It's more monitoring the creek, probably at surface level, just to see, but I can get more information about that because...
If you were.
Sure. Yeah, but it's not something that's going to be evasive. That, I do know that. I did ask that question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, City Attorney Nicodemus.
Thank you, President Potter. I want to use my time tonight to give a shout out to the Owens Group. As everyone knows, as to the attorney mayor, Bivens brought in the Owens Group for diversion in mayor's court, and it's been a game changer, and they've been operating with us for years now, and sometimes, sometimes taking little for granted. They assist in getting residents that are in here without a driver's license and working through the BMV. But every now and then, we have a case that pops up that kind of reminds me of the extra special thing they do. This morning, I was getting ready to issue a warrant because someone didn't show up for court. Happens on a regular basis, and if you don't show up for court, you get a warrant. And Mr. Owens is like, wait a minute. Give me a minute. He comes back, and he was able to verify that this person had checked themselves into a rehab. Of course, they're here on drug issues. They're in rehab. Well, when you're in rehab and you end up with a warrant, they kick you out when they find out about it because you can't have any pending legal action. So, using his connections, we were able, he's going to be able to monitor this person's progress through rehab. Most importantly, he was here to intervene so that we didn't issue a warrant, so a person who voluntarily checked themselves into rehab to try to make things better, we didn't impede that. And so, I just wanted to share that because, again, every now and then, you know, it's run-of-the-mill, and they're helping us with driver's licenses, but these cases pop up sometimes, and it was just a good reminder to me this morning of the value they bring, not just to, you know, helping us in mayor's court, but to the residents and to the people in the city, and especially those that are trying to break the cycle. So, I just wanted to share that and give them a shout out, and it's been a wonderful, wonderful asset to have them here, so.
Thank you. City Auditor Quinzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no official report tonight. I'll just ask for favorable consideration for ordinances fifty-five, fifty-six, and fifty-seven.
Thank you. Director of Public Service, Rollins, is not with us this evening, nor is the Director of Public Safety, Greg, which brings Treasury Alexander.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Thank you all for joining us tonight. First and foremost, Mayor, thank you for the Juneteenth proclamation and the historic background of that holiday. I think it's going to be a good time this Saturday. Unfortunately, I will miss it, but I will be there in spirit. For the month of May, the city had cash receipts of about eight-point-eight million, cash expenses of about seven-point-six million. At May thirty-first, our portfolio had thirty-five-point-six million in the bank, and our average yield rounded out to about three-point-three-four percent. We are solvent. General fund looks good, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Next, Director of Economic Development, Russell.
I have no official report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Since our last meeting, the following reports were filed in our office, which would include the auditors' reports for May twenty twenty-five and the treasurer's reports for April twenty twenty-five. Under Communications, this is a claim, we have three items listed tonight. First one being a notice from the Ohio Department of Ripper Control for a transfer of a D five license from ALS Lounge in Whitehall LLC, thirty-eight seventy-eight East Main Street and Patio, Whitehall, Ohio, four-three-two-one-three, to Easy ES LLC, DBA, JJ Easy's, thirty-eight seventy-eight East Main Street and Patio, Whitehall, Ohio, four-three-two-one-three. Next is the agenda for the June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five Planning Commission meeting, and next is the minutes for the June fifth, twenty twenty-five Planning Commission meeting. This brings us to a special presentation we have this evening, which will be covering Fairway Cliff's initiative petition review. That'll be presented by Ms. Russell, our Director of Economic Development. Ms. Russell, I cede the floor to you.
I feel like it's best if I'm here, so that's okay.
That's absolutely.
My position right here. Well, thank you, President Potter. Thank you, everybody looking up as council. I'm excited to be here and talk to you and share some things about the Fairway Cliff initiative petition here tonight. All right. So, just to remind us what we're doing with this initiative petition. It's to amend the zoning code to establish a new overlay district that would effectively become a new portion of the planning and zoning code. So, this legislation is requested by the Initiative Petition Committee, and last night, this was heard by the Planning Commission as a reminder. It goes to Planning Commission as an advisory action to City Council. Next slide, please. Included on the screen is just a snippet of the zoning code, just to remind us where we are, what we're talking about, and kind of looking at it from the lens of our current zoning code. So, the picture of the map on the left side is currently what the zoning map shows. To branch you, there is a white road that is outlined along kind of, not the large ones, freeway, but that would be the Fairway Cliff kind of highlight, as you can see. And then, if you looked to the right, the red outline is the actual thirteen parcels that are included in the initiative petition. Next slide, please. At this time, I want to provide a factual review of the ordinance items that are going to directly impact the planning and zoning code. What we've done is created a slideshow that relates to the current zoning district and the setbacks and requirements of them, as well as other policies and procedures, and then the proposed zoning that is part of the overlay district itself. So, to begin to start our conversation, I'd like to discuss the current zoning and the permitted building types. As you can see on the left side, the current zoning allows for detached single-unit buildings, attached single-unit buildings, duplex buildings, multi-unit buildings, and institutional flex buildings with special permit and special provisions. Under the new overlay district, it would only allow for detached, detached, single-unit buildings. Next slide, please.
Quick question. When you say current zoning, you mean the S T U R zoning?
Correct. Thank you. On the left, the current zoning has the S T U R, as Principal Ms. Smith indicated. Provides for a setback, various setbacks based on where you are looking at the yard. For example, the front yard, anywhere but Fairway Boulevard is a forty-five-foot maximum with a ten-foot minimum. The Fairway Boulevard front yard setback in the current zoning is fifty-foot minimum. Side yard has no maximum, somewhere between zero and eight, depending on the type of noted structure. Rear yard, no maximum with a twenty-foot minimum or average from a set backs. The lot coverage is fifty percent less remaining open space. Under the current proposed zoning, you'll see some items that are listed here as not specified. If it is not specified, it would default to our current zoning requirements. Therefore, side yard, rear yard, and lot coverage would default to what we see today in the S T U R. The front yard setback itself is provided that there is a requirement for two-hundred feet if the lot does not have a two-hundred-linear foot frontage across the measurement of the yard. So, for example, if the lot itself is not two-hundred feet long, then it has to be two-hundred feet away from the road. Next slide, please. Under the current zoning, we have different types. Ms. Og, do you mind just going down a little bit further since I have a footnote? Thank you very much. Under the current zoning, we see that there is frontage, frontage type, height, open space type, permitted land uses, and special permitted land uses. As is the last slide, if there's nothing specified in the written overlay text, it will default to the S T U R. So, you can see that with the frontage type, height, and open space type, we would see the same provisions that we currently have under our zoning code. Things to note, I'll just note the changes rather than reading you the current zoning. The changes would be the frontage along Fairway has to be a two-hundred-foot minimum compared to the current frontage being fifty-foot minimum in the S T U R and the two-hundred minimum along the Fairway Boulevard. Please note that the definition of frontage is different. So, the definition of frontage under our current zoning text is the area between the building facade and the front lot line or the right line. Under the definition of the overlay district, it is the definition that is proposed actual in the text itself. So, that is the frontage along Fairway Boulevard with respect to any parcel or lot shall meet a shared boundary with the right way of Fairway Boulevard of the applicable length, if any, regardless of whether or not the principal access to the parcel or lot and our building on the parcel or lot is from the Fairway Boulevard. So, that just, it changes the measurement of where we would measure the actual front yard setback. The frontage requirement, I'm sorry, the frontage distance. Next slide, please. The next couple slides are really more of a matter of policy and procedures and how we do things as it relates to development. So, currently, the current zoning and the policy procedures allows for subdivision development, improvements, and renovations to be made. Additionally, we allow for public street, road, sidewalk, multi-use path, and a shared use path, as well as infrastructure projects and capital improvement projects through our normal capital improvement project process. Under the new overlay text, we are no longer permitted to allow for subdivision development, improvement, and renovations. Additionally, any public infrastructure process has a, or public infrastructure project has a new process that it has to follow. So, this includes providing to the public a community impacts analysis, a traffic study proving why, why public support, environmental study, as well as a public hearing that is provided with a ninety-day notice of that hearing. Additionally, these types of projects have to be presented through an ordinance process that is occurring one-hundred-and-eighty to two-hundred-and-seventy days prior to the start of construction. So, the length of time that we would have to basically execute a project increases just due to the policies that would be suggested for increased education and approval through an ordinance rather than just through a capital improvement project or a capital improvement budget. Additionally, the city cannot use any funds for the, from the capital, for a capital improvement project in this district unless it goes through this process. Just to give you a understanding, that includes grants, bonds, other type of capital improvement allocations, like the street improvement program, would also fall under this new process, which would include that ninety-day notice prior to the meeting, and then the one-hundred-and-eighty to two-hundred-and-seventy days prior to construction. Next slide, please. Currently, under our zoning code, we're able to give approvals of rezonings, variance, permits, plots, P to Ds, or planned unit development, subdivision construction, public infrastructure projects through our standard policies and procedures that pertain to each of those individual categories. The proposed zoning limits the capability to do any of those things, which would be the rezoning, the variance, permits, plots, any infrastructure projects that would circumvent the section that is drafted into the overlay district. Yesterday, at Planning Commission, we were able to hear some of the, from some of the members of the petition committee, and they're able to share with us that staff's interpretation that no permit could be issued or no variance can be issued was not the intent of the code. So, a meeting has been scheduled with one of the members of the petition committee to help kind of work through some of these items that seem to be, maybe have conflicting interests, but by the way, that were interpreted and the staff and what the intent was behind that. So, we are eager to work with the citizens and understand what some of the intent was to understand what the, you know, the language actually is and how it applies. Additionally, additionally, as a result, staff would like to recommend that this ordinance be postponed to give us time to work with the petition committee. We'll also agree to City Council time to bring in the set committee and be able to do their due diligence to understand the impacts of the overlay district. I'm here to answer any questions and help us understand anything that might still be left ununderstood.
I do have two questions. One, with the proposed zoning as not being able to use any funds for capital improvement projects, and maybe I'm misunderstanding it a little bit, can they use, currently, we do like home improvement. Can they use those funds that staff would be like, that citizens could come and apply here or no? I don't know if you're familiar with that because you're new, so I understand.
So, I'm not familiar exactly what budget it comes out of or how that would work, but just to give a clarification, we are able to use capital funds or capital improvements or any type of dollars that we can use. However, it just has to go through that more stringent process.
Okay, got it. So, I just missed it.
Councilmember Heck, those, that home reinvestment fund does not come out of capital improvement?
Okay. I didn't think so, but I was just curious on that. The other question is, I'm glad that you're meeting to try to better understand what, you know, they're initially looking to do. Would you be able to just like continue to keep us up to date on those as well? That's perfect.
Can I take that up to date a little further? Are people allowed to attend that meeting? Other people, council, whoever wants to attend that meeting?
I would defer to the mayor.
Which, which being?
Petitioner.
Petitioner meeting with.
I want, we can talk about when that is set up. I, I mean, certainly, I wouldn't, I wouldn't see any problems with that. I mean, not on first glance. I mean, not on first glance.
With the exception of making sure.
Yeah.
We don't have too many councils.
Yeah.
Sunset law.
Right, right.
I also think that it might be beneficial if I speak with a member of the petition committee to kind of get their, you know, guidance on what they would like.
Because this would be the first meeting?
It is the first. Yeah. I guess, you know, in a, in a positive way, I'm a fresh set of eyes to the project, and I haven't been here for a long period of time to understand some of the history. So some of that is using to understand maybe their perspective and to be able to get a different glance and understanding about where we are and how we got here from their position. I think I've been well briefed by staff to understand from our position how we arrived here, but I think it would, you know, just be beneficial for me to understand where they are, how we got here, and really kind of do my due diligence to be able to do the best I can to guide the process forward.
Well, and I think the sensitivity of it as well, that you are negotiating a situation and you want to feel where the lay of the land is and so forth before things start popping and happening, jumping and all that. So I understand.
If it's okay, maybe I could follow up with the meeting, or if I have further discussions and things.
That sounds great.
So if, I don't know the best word for this, if any changes, so if this were to go through, any changes to this language or like these capital improvement, these capital improvement process, this would go to a ballot of the whole city, just the people in this area that are affected? Who approves?
If it's on the ballot, it's for the whole city.
Okay. So if, you know, we wanted to put in a multi-use path, if it goes through this process, who is the final say?
So if there are changes to the proposal, the petitioners can actually amend it. So if, you know, some of this language that where the city's interpreting a little different and after this meeting gets cleaned up, whatever, the petitioners can, can say, okay, here's the revision we want to this, and that becomes it. If the city amends it, if anybody in council makes an amendment, so you add the path back, and the petition committee does not, is not amenable to that, they, they do not accept that, they, they do not want that in there, they then have 10 days to, to give the city notice that they want what they presented on the ballot. At that point, whatever amendments council may would come off.
I was speaking more is if this proposed initiative becomes new zoning law, who, after the exhaustive traffic studies provided, the community impact, the environmental study, and there's a public hearing, who makes that final vote of whether or not we still move forward with a street, road, sidewalk, path, whatever infrastructure? That goes to a ballot as well, or is that a silly council vote?
No, that's council. It just has to follow that stringent process.
Okay.
Can you elaborate, like what exactly an exhaustive traffic study is, what all entails, like a community impact?
How's that defined, whether it hits the threshold?
Like, what is a pub, yeah.
Yeah, it's technically not defined, right, in this overlay text. Now frankly, I haven't had the time to cross-reference maybe the definition section of our actual zoning code itself to the overlay district, which we can do to understand some of the terms to see if it's there. I can share that some projects you would do depending on the type of project, some of these things anyways, especially depending on where the funding source is coming from. Some of these things might already be in place, but there might be others that they wouldn't. And that it would be us having as a city, if we're doing a public infrastructure project, have to spend additional dollars to be able to complete a project by having to pay for a traffic study or an environmental study in an instance where this would not normally be a part of a capital improvement process. I think it's project-by-project basis based on the budget area and where it's coming from. I think the mayor could guide me if I'm wrong, that's just my, my knowledge on how local government works from experience. But I think more particularly, it just is really going to depend on the project, what's happening, where the budget come from, and what the normal processes that we do to arrive at that project.
The, the current zoning map that was on the left was identified, and then the one on the proposed on, on the right. If there are, if there has been identified some parcels that do not want to be within this area, what would be their recourse and what would they need to do in order to not be a part of that little small grid outlined area, overlay area?
I do not have experience with initiative petition from that standpoint. I don't know if Mr. Demas is able to give any guidance.
Yeah, and the mayor's right, if you didn't hear, there's, there's not really anything they can do. They are part of this overlay district area, so I guess the best they could do would be to campaign against it. But, but because they're in there, when we do zoning, it's in these areas, they, they would be included in it.
I would think it would be much like when the zoning code was changed, and we had it up here in front of us, that would affect various properties. They, while they didn't necessarily ask for zoning changes, they could certainly come to council and say, we don't like this, and we have a problem, et cetera. I would think that it would be similar to that. Yes?
I have a question while we're still kind of on the map in the area. So two questions. One, we've had legislation before us that was very, very similar, but this is an overlay. How, and we had conversations about spot zoning. This is not that because it's an overlay?
Pretty much, yeah. Overlay is kind of a loophole to spot zoning.
Okay. And then a second question. Again, if none of these can be answered this evening, that's fine, I just wanted to throw them out there. So I read through that paragraph that says, these parcels and this lot line, and it was rather heavy. So what I'm seeing on the map is only the properties east of Fairway are included in this overlay, not the ones on the west side, or even some further down on the east side of the road. And that's the language that was probably the most complicated thing for me to try to understand. Okay. I'm, I guess, because the previous zoning, somebody please correct me if I'm wrong, it was, was it west and east side of the road, or it was just the east side of the road still? The estate district?
Yeah, I think it's kind of jots and juts on west side, east side, what's included in STUR, what's not included in STUR. It kind of, if you, if you look at the map, there's kind of an orange area, also on the west side of the road, which falls into a different zoning category. So I think that's where there's some properties that are just currently in a different zoning district than the east side.
Okay.
I believe it, if I may, I believe it was the estate district.
Yeah.
And these properties over on the east side of this map represent far larger properties, estates than the west side. And I think that's what it originally was.
Just wanted to make sure I was understanding clearly what properties this were affecting.
Any other questions from Ms. Russell?
Thank you very much for your report. We'll be obviously talking in the weeks to come, and look forward to that.
Thank you.
This now brings us to our first poll public of the evening. I'll invite anyone to please come forward, if they'd like to speak, just need to sign in. I don't want to sign and show up on the podium. State your name and...
Good evening, Mr. President. Members of council, Mike Shannon, 5166 Edna Road. I've been here much more than you would like. I think 20 out of the last 24 meetings, and I keep forgetting to ask you the most important question that my wife has been asking me for the last 24 weeks that I've been in the council. Can we please get some monitoring of the speed situation on our street? The traffic, the cut-through traffic from Fairway, is it just horrific to the civilian eye, the average speed as well, that's 40 miles an hour for the vast majority of cars that traverse that? I know that priorities are such that you can't spend your time writing traffic to this, but there's ample funding available for the city to park on Greenwood, particularly early in the morning in a rush hour. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for poll public? Seeing no one? Ms. Og, would you please call rolls to whether each member of council was given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting, including any add-on legislation?
Smith.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Thank you. Under third reading, we have ordinance 372025, amending section 110302 of the Planning and Zoning Code of the city of Whitehall.
Mr. President, I would like to move to on-table ordinance 372025.
Thank you.
Second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Dixon to un-table ordinance 372025. Is there any discussion? Ms. Og, please call roll.
Smith.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Order 372025 is off the table.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Dixon to adopt. Is there any discussion?
It did get favorable.
Oh, that was, that was, I was going to say, yes, this did get, no, no, universal favorable recommendation from Planning Commission. What do you mean, date specific? This is not that.
Okay.
So there's no additional discussion. Ms. Og, please call roll.
Smith.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Yes.
Order 372025 has been adopted. Ordinance 402025, authorizing the adoption of the May 2025 replacement pages to the codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 402025 and move for its adoption.
Second. There's been a motion by Mr. Dixon, second by Mr. Morrison to introduce ordinance 402025 and for its adoption. Is there any discussion? Ms. Og, please call roll.
Smith.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck. Yes.
Order 402025 has been adopted. Order 422025, an ordinance enacted by the electors of the city of Whitehall pursuant to an initiative petition to amend the zoning code to establish a Fairway Boulevard overlay district, to limit future uses, subdivision, and infrastructure within said district, to amend the zoning map to protect large trees, to impose a moratorium on development pending the outcome of initiative petition, and to provide for a private right of action.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to postpone ordinance 422025 to no later than July 15th, 2025.
Thank you. There's been a motion by Mr. Dixon, second by Ms. Smith to postpone to no later than July 15th, 2025, ordinance 422025. Is there any discussion? Ms. Og, please call roll.
Smith.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Yes.
Order 422025 has been postponed to no later than July 15th, 2025. Under second reading, we have got no legislation. Brings us to first reading, where we have three items. First is ordinance 552025, authorizing and approving a certain appropriation in the amount of $125,000 from unappropriate monies and the general fund 101, the water break repair expense account 101.950.59,800.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 552025 and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison to introduce ordinance 552025 and for suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Og, please call roll.
Smith.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison. Is there any discussion? Ms. Og, please call roll.
Smith.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Yes.
Order 552025 has been adopted. Ordinance 562025, authorizing and approving a fund transfer in the amount of $100,000 from the lifecycle replacement fund 315 to the technology fund 314.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 562025 and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison for the introduction of ordinance 562025 and the suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Og, please call roll.
Smith.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? Ms. Og, please call roll.
Smith.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck. Yes.
Order 562025 has been adopted. Our final piece of legislation this evening is ordinance 572025, authorizing and approving a fund transfer in the amount of $205,000 from unappropriate monies in the general fund 101, the accrued benefit reserve fund 505, authorizing and approving a certain appropriation from the accrued benefit reserve fund 505, the accrued benefit reserve expense account 505.000.51,000, in the amount of $205,000.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 572025 and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Ms. Heck to introduce ordinance 572025 and the suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Og, please call roll.
Smith.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Elmore to adopt, second by Ms. Heck. Any discussion? Ms. Og, please call roll.
Smith.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Yes.
Order 572025 has been adopted. This brings us to our second poll public of the evening, and the same rules apply. You have up to three minutes, please, to come forward if you've got anything you'd like to share. Seeing nothing, I'll go to committee day board.
Okay, I do have something. So Devin wanted me to make the announcement that the Tree Commission Academy is doing site analysis throughout the city next Monday and Tuesday, the 20th through the 24th, from 9:30 to 4:00. They'll be walking through the community to study sites and provide recommendations on the kind of trees to be planted on each site. It's open to the public. We'll be meeting at the wine stay at 9:30, both days to coordinate, but then Tuesday from 2:00 to 4:00, they'll be there doing the analysis at the Whitehall Community Park. There is going to be more details, and advertisements will be shared soon. Some of the other things is, the mayor mentioned quite a few things. There's also the mayor's office of neighborhoods is going to be at the enclave Wednesday, June 18th, from 6:00 to 8:00. And I think that's it.
Okay, but I, thank you. Anything else committee day board? Now poll council. Ms. Smith, you're first up. You always hate being last, so it's all you.
No, I love being last. I remember, I like to say like, same. Thank you, Mayor, for your Juneteenth proclamation. I love how we continue to recognize those that are often put aside or forgotten, and that's really important. Thank you, city attorney Nick Ademas, for sharing that story about the Owens group. It's always great to hear how we are doing things differently and impacting people's lives in a different way. That could have seriously impacted somebody's return to a healthy life, so they're doing amazing work. It's summertime, there's plenty going on. As you can hear, there's something every week, every weekend, so please check out week, every weekend, so please check out the city's page, look at the events, um, and show up, I can't tell you how many times, people are like, I didn't know. Um, so look, be on the lookout for those things. I probably forgot something, someone else will cover it. That's all I have.
Fair enough. Mr. Dixon?
Thank you, President Potter, thank you everyone, uh, in the house tonight, uh, for coming out. Uh, thank you for those that are watching from home. Uh, thank you to the mayor for the proclamation on Juneteenth, and because we won't be here that day, happy Juneteenth. Um, thank you, Ms. Russell, for the presentation, and again, welcome aboard. Um, Pride Month, you know, I, I will say this, and I did wear my, uh, pink triangle button here tonight. And the thing is, I hear online, I hear people speak, and they're like, why pride? Why should we care? Stop shoving it down our throats, et cetera, et cetera. And, uh, the pink triangle came from, uh, uh, those in, uh, Germany in World War II, who, uh, it wasn't just Jews who got shuttled off to the gas chambers, uh, the other two groups were Gypsies and homosexuals. And, so, the thing is, is that, um, the gay community, LGBTQIA+ are prone and susceptible to such hatred and marginalization. And for that reason, pride came about, uh, because people were sick and tired of being made to feel like they were lesser, uh, human beings. And, uh, as we see through, uh, the final solution in World War II, that this is a needed thing, and whether it was then, or whether it's now, we see the gentleman that was shot and killed that was a voice actor on the King of the Hill. This kind of thing just never ends. So, what we'll do in the meantime is speak out and, and say what we will, and say what we must to prevent this kind of business from, uh, poisoning our lives. I do want to, uh, thank, uh, Mr. Nikodemus once again for showing his support with his pride tie. I appreciate that, it's very, very thoughtful. Um, I, I wanted to say, uh, as well, um, you know, the, the changes in how this meeting is, 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 uh, being streamed, et cetera, I appreciate all the, uh, the, the efficiency and so forth, these reasons. Uh, there are people that reached out to me and were concerned, and as we have discussed this concern before at this, uh, at this dais, uh, about comments, and people being able to comment at the meeting, or on the meeting, during the meeting, whatever, and I'm concerned about that. I don't know what the, the situation is now, and after having a conversation with Ms. Aug earlier today, uh, it's the first day of the rollout, let's see where we go, let's see what happens, so I'm reserving judgment on that, but I go forward with a little, uh, concern, as I have expressed in the past, so I will say that. Um, Mr. Shannon, uh, you know, this issue has been going on since you were a city attorney, and with the speeding, and I have spoken out on it a number of times, the city itself, and I know that, uh, Councilor Elmore, uh, I don't know if it was legislation, or brought up, uh, something to put stop signs at Fairway, and I guess it's just an ongoing problem. And I know that the administration has, uh, started, uh, talks, as it were, to try to get things done, to change things, I'm looking forward to more of those. I wasn't able to attend the first one, but I certainly have things to add. Uh, and to me, it's about bafflers, it's about changing people's attitudes, it's about where they can go. And just this past week, and I'm so tired of it, right down my street, on that little bridge on Doni Street, huge, massive semi-tractor trailer trucks, massive, bigger than normal even, I, I think, why are you on this street? Why are you coming down here? And then I have a sign in my front yard that says, uh, this is my yard, not your trashcan, 'cause I'm tired of people throwing their trash in my yard. And here's the thing about Doni Street, or Edna, or wherever it is, you know, these streets are, are, are built for various reasons, and, and people use them as a means to get from point A over to point B, perhaps from English Village over to Kroger, or whatever else it is. And, uh, there was a gentleman in my, uh, district, my ward, that talked about making dead ends on some streets, because the thing is, is people use those as a cut-through, but they don't care about the neighborhood, and I'm not saying everyone, but some people do not care about the neighborhood. It's my neighborhood, it's your neighborhood, and if you're gonna come through this neighborhood, you respect it, uh, by following the traffic laws, not throwing all your trash. I picked a dirty diaper out of a tree in my front yard one time, in the, in the branches. Uh, so, this is the thing, these streets are meant for a certain thing, passage, not your awful behavior. So, I understand, Mr. Shannon, and I appreciate your point, and I hope that this city will come up with some great ideas and, uh, abilities to make the city, not just in certain ways, but in all ways, um, a place where people love to live, love being, and aren't crushed by these sort of awful things that people do to our neighborhoods. So, thank you, Mr. Shannon, for your comments. Uh, finally, the tree analysis, you know, I ca, I have fifty-two trees in my yard, I'm rather proud of it, 'cause I love trees. In my side yard by the creek, I counted them the other day, thirteen varieties, and I say that because I'm proud of that. Thirteen different varieties of tree in one side yard, so that's crazy. I hope o, other people take that to heart, and do it for themselves, because trees, 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 it's the best. Uh, and so, I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Ms. Elmore?
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you for those that have, are attending this meeting. Um, thank you, Mayor, for all the information that you provided, um, especially the, um, stringing site that's going to update efficiently and optimize, and I think that is the goal of city government, uh, to make things the best that we possibly can. Um, and, um, also want to, uh, thank you for having the foresight and the initiative to do a fishing with dad, uh, first ever. I'm sure you have a lot of pictures regarding that, and I would definitely like to see, uh, some of the pictures that were taken during that time, because that was a first of, um, at Whitehall doing something like that. Um, the Owens group and the diversion program, much needed, it helps assist people and get them back on the right track, so, uh, thank you for, um, just inter, intervening in that process, and it moving the way it should move. Um, I want to take a moment to recognize the proclamation on Juneteenth. Uh, thank you for all the pro, proclamations, but specifically this one. Um, and I say specifically this one because, um, black people have made a contribution to this society, uh, the United States, and it is unfortunate that it took till June seventeen, twenty-twenty-one, for it to become a federal law and a national holiday, but so that it is. I appreciate that, um, and all the contributions from the arts, to the, um, to the buildings, to everything that we, to the music, to everything that we participated and moved forward in this society, and, uh, I will definitely be celebrating, uh, on Saturday. Um, Mr. Shannon, I am with you on the speeding on Fairway. When I proposed the legislation, it was initially for country club and Fairway, and also Edna and Fairway. Uh, we did do a traffic, uh, study, and we decided that we would start with just one of the signs, but as I've, I live on Fairway Boulevard, I see people tailgating, going around me, going around other people, almost hitting folks at the mailbox, I mean, I've seen it all, so, um, there definitely needs to be something to, uh, to remediate that speeding, so that we can, um, make sure that there are no traffic accidents. And, um, everybody have a wonderful Juneteenth and a great week. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Elmore. Mr. Morrison?
Thank you, Mayor, I'd like to thank everyone.
Did you just give me a, a-
I said mayor, didn't I?
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate the, uh-
Mayor, I apologize.
The bump.
Anyway, thank, thank you, Mr. Potter, President Potter. Uh, I'd like to thank everyone for showing up and, uh, for the presentations, Ms. Russell and the mayor, thank you for your presentations, like to thank those who watched from home. Everyone have a good week.
Thank you. Ms. Heck?
Thank you, President Potter. Um, thank you, everybody watching from home, everybody that came in, um, thank you to those that spoke. Uh, thank you to the mayor for the proclamation, as well as to Drackey for the presentation. Um, I did wanna piggyback off, uh, Councilor woman, um, Smith's, uh, comment about checking to see what's going on, there is a lot of great things going on, um, in the city, one way to do that is the newsletter, it's really great, it sends you weekly reminders and updates, you can sign up, um, through the website, and it just sends you a quick email and has everything that is going on. Um, that's honestly where I get most of my information to share, so, um, the other thing is, thank you, the mayor, for the, um, fishing with fathers, I hope that Parks and Rec does it again, I really would love to take my son, but I am terrified of the worm, so he